I call the planning commission meeting for September 26, 2024 to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, would you call the roll?
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Excused.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on September 5, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Sting.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity to do so. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded a time as well, or some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow an adult daycare as a similar use at 7541 Manner Avenue, Unit 6. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and for the record, everybody spell their name, okay? And tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hi, my name is Deangelo Townsend, and that's D-E-A-N-G-E-L-O Townsend, T-O-W-N-S-E-N-D, and I'm here on behalf of Octavia Scott.
Thank you. Just tell us a little bit about what you guys want to do.
We're planning to open up a adult day center, which basically is a dark daycare center specialized in helping those who suffer from developmental disabilities.
That's it in a nutshell?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Just hang tight. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We've noted three conditions in the staff report.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the three conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. And you're all set. Yeah. We have a conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreational facility, Hot Works Fitness Studio at 8020 Broadmoor Road. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
My name is Corey O'Donnell. The address is 8020 Broadmoor Road. This is a Hot Works franchise. It's a 24-hour infrared sauna fitness studio. So there are like 10 infrared saunas that you'll work out in.
Okay. Is that it?
Do you want to say anything?
Sure.
Give us your name and address, too.
Sure, thank you. Jeremy Smith, Onward Design Collaborative, The Architect, 18119 Detroit Avenue, Lakewood, Ohio. So yeah, basically, we're not making any changes to the envelope, the parking, you know, it's really just an interior fit out where we're adding an accessible restroom and shower and accommodating the conditional use. So it's really kind of a simple project, but, you know, again, it doesn't look like we're going to need to make any changes to the, whether it's the exterior lighting or parking arrangements, so.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Is there anybody wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, we have one, we have one condition noted. I would also ask if the, maybe the applicant could elaborate. It's a 24/7 controlled access. After regular business hours, how many people typically utilize this type of facility? I know there's one already operating in Rocky River, so.
You got to get right into the mic, or they're going to yell at me.
There is, yes, there is one in Rocky River in Avon Lake. Honestly, I don't have a number of how many people are using it after hours. I think it's, it's pretty few. I think 11 to 8, it will be staffed. So I think after 8:00 p.m., there's very few people. But it is, there's a security system, and everyone, even during business hours, everyone enters with a secure code from their phone.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? Dave?
So, there's no employees there after hours when?
They're, so, correct. They're, it's staffed from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day.
Okay. And Kathy, maybe this question's to you, is I read in the permit application that there's approximately five employees plus a maximum of 36 people, but I count 29 parking spaces for 41, and this is a shared building with other businesses. How does that work? I mean, is this a parking issue? Does this create a potential parking issue?
We, I guess we didn't anticipate it being, just based on the space itself, the size of spaces, I mean, I think the 36 is somewhat generous. Certainly, you can add a condition that says that you, that allows you the right to monitor the parking, and if you feel it's necessary, it can be called back. You can do that. It's not a high-traffic strip center, so we weren't overly concerned, but certainly you can add a condition if you felt, if you felt comfortable.
I don't wish to add a condition. I just wanted to clarify. I agree in that it isn't a continuously occupied strip center.
Yeah. And there are also 10 saunas, and it's one to three people per sauna. Most of the time, only one person is going in per sauna, so if that helps.
Is there anything else? So this is a, you go and work out in a sauna?
Yep. It's, it's the combination of heat, infrared energy, and exercise.
I was a college wrestler, and I know it well.
Yeah? Okay.
I know, and I can't, I'm surprised that people would willingly do that.
Yeah.
I remember the last time I walked out of one of those thinking, "I'm never getting back."
It's, it's super beneficial to your health. Yeah, both mental and physical health.
I got you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crocker.
Like, what temperatures are we talking about? Are we like, well, how hot does it get? What are the temperature ranges?
It goes up to 135 degrees.
Wow, okay.
As much water as you can pour on that thing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and that's why I asked the question about after-hours and no employee there, is you potentially run the risk of a client being there alone.
Yeah.
That could have a, what are the provisions if somebody's there alone and there is an emergency incident?
They have emergency necklaces that they take into the saunas with them.
Thank you. Johnny, anything?
Good.
Anyone? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the one condition.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to remove from the table a miscellaneous review to amend a conditional use permit, Federalese, at 8787 Manner Avenue. So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion to dismiss the amendment portion of the conditional use permit without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion to remove from the table a miscellaneous review to amend a conditional use permit at 7121 Hart Street.
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. And is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up, give us your name and address.
Nick Brunner, N-I-C-K, B-R-U-N-N-E-R, 7121 Hart Street, Manner.
All right, do you want to, do you want to say anything?
The, one of the things I may ask, I agree with everything that you're talking about except the, I need the additional used cars from five up to 10, and it'd be a minimum area of 30, 3,700 square foot. That's what you need for the state. You have to have 3,700 square foot for used car, to have used cars here, and I'm applying, well, I didn't apply, I was approved from the state for that, so, you know, you guys, they held it for five cars because when I was up on Route 20, that's where it was, and I never got it, when I moved down on Hart Street, we never got it up more because I didn't have the parking up on Route 20, but I have parking here for, you know, 10 cars for sale, for the used cars. And like I said, the state said that you have to have a minimum of, I think it was 3,700 square foot.
3,500?
3,500, 3,500 square feet. And then what they did was, that just happened a year ago when they came and audited me, and I met all the specifications they needed, but they wanted me to put a chain to take the used cars and separate them from my used cars, my customers' cars there for repairs. So I normally used to have the cars, as you can see on the front, they were facing west on the front of the building, yeah, up there, those, that's where I used to have them. Now they're over there on the south side, yeah, right in there. And now what I'm going to do is, the overflow of my cars that aren't going to be for sale, they'll be on the south side of the building where the RVs were, yeah, right in there. I'll clean, I'm cleaning it out now, and then I'll put the overflow of the cars in there. That's all fenced in, and it's concrete. I concreted that a long time ago for the city. That was one of the things they wanted me to do back about, I don't know, '85 or '86, something like that. And then I got storage in the back, and then, you know, behind my property was, it's called Glow Quartz, and I had an agreement with him where I could have some of the cars back there, but you guys want me to clean that up back there, I'll get them out of there too. And then alongside the railroad tracks, you guys don't want any vehicles parked from my building to the railroad tracks, so I've moved them all. I've gotten rid of all that stuff. If you've ever driven by there and seen what I've changed since this all started, I don't know, it was six, eight weeks ago, whatever, and so I'm trying. It's just, now I need, I can't do this in 30 days either. I got some medical issues, and I got other things going on, so if you give me eight months where I can be in compliance with everything, because if I tell you a month and I don't make it, you're going to be all upset with me, so I'm not going to tell you something that, you know, I can't do. I'd rather tell you that, give me enough time, because winter's coming. I'm working at it. I got to run a business and try to clean this up, which I have been, and that's what I need. So, and I don't know if you've driven by and looked at my shop, it's different than it was in the pictures, and I did leave a picture to Kathy the last time, that I am trying. I'm not stonewalling you guys, and, you know, I've been in business for 47 years, so it took me 47 years to make this mess, and I can't clean it up in 30 days, so.
I got you. Thank you. Kathy, you want to give us a general rundown of, of the whole?
History.
The whole history here.
Certainly. So this started over the summer, our most recent conversations with Mr. Brunner, and as he's noted, he's been in business 47 years, he's been at this location for 40. So the first conditional use permit was issued in 1984, and it was issued for auto repair and used car sales, and it was limited to five vehicles.
Well, the first conditional use permit was in '77, up on 20, and then it was rechanged where we were.
But we're just talking, but we're just talking about this site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and then in 1988, I came back and wanted to rent U-Hauls on-site, and so a conditional use was approved for the renting of U-Hauls. I came back in 2002 to no longer rent the U-Hauls, but wanted to rent RVs, rent and lease them. And that CUP was issued, and then it was amended again in 2006 to rent five more RVs, and the stipulation was that five could be up front, visible within the front setback, and the other five, as you can see in that picture, behind the fence, in the fenced-in area. So Mr. Brunner has always, has always responded to our concerns in communications when we've talked to him over the years. There's always that little bit of violation creep, you know, if you will, where sometimes there's been too many cars on-site and so forth, and as you can see from this picture, that was drawn in July of this year, and as we had up with the aerial too, but this shows the, the vehicles that are on what's actually is the north side of the, north side of the building, which is by the right, by the railroad right-of-way, and actually technically outside of his property. And then, you know, vehicles over time have sometimes, you know, creeped onto the grass when they always had to be on an improved surface. And all of the different CUPs have kind of said everything that we've wanted to see. Everything has to be on an improved surface. It has to be, it has to be outside of the right-of-way. You can't have dismantled vehicles in the front of the building. It was acknowledged years ago that the area behind the fence didn't have to be paved and improved, and the city was okay with that. And so we're really at this point, as you can see on the far-right picture, the aerial there, you know, those, some of those vehicles are off property, and we just would like those to be put back on the property or just removed altogether, because that neighboring property doesn't have a CUP for the storage of vehicles. Mr. Brunner is correct. I actually drove by today. It looks the best I've ever seen it. It looks fantastic. There are no, there are no vehicles in the front of the building, immediately against the front of the building. It's just very neat and tidy, and so I know the city administration is thrilled. We just need to keep it that way. That's the concern, because what happens then is sometimes over time, then they accumulate again, and sometimes they're parked in the drive. And I know he said that, you know, what he's indicated to us is, sometimes people just drop off their vehicles and leave, you know, they, you know, and so then he has to go through the trouble of finding out who it is and then get them to get it off the property. So there's that. But, so we want to work with them. We just, we want to clean up the CUPs because over time, they're no longer running the RVs. He does want to repair them and continue to repair them. We've made our recommendations with regard to the sale of used vehicles. I mean, that is a non-conforming use, unless you have new vehicle sales on the property, you're technically not even supposed to have used car sales, but because this was granted 40 years ago, I think the administration at least feels that they're willing to keep the five vehicles, but would rather not see that increase because that would be an increase in a nonconformity. So I think the rest of the conditions are pretty self-explanatory, and as he's indicated, he's done that. We can certainly work with him on timeframes. We did recommend some additional landscaping. There isn't really adequate landscaping on the site, and that might help just too, to kind of serve as a buffer. We're just talking about, you know, and we're not talking about lavish landscaping, but just maybe a few plantings up front that maybe he could put in that would just kind of help green up and beautify the front of the, the front of the, within the front setback between the parking and the, and the street right-of-way. So happy to answer any other questions with regard to those conditions.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tiedemann.
Kathy, can you explain how the car sales, since Manner doesn't do that, right? You said you have to sell new cars to sell used cars. So how did that occur that he was selling? You said they allowed it back in '84, so was there no rule?
Right. That provision was not in place.
So it's a grandfathered?
Yes. It's a grandfathered use, and if, you know, anybody were to walk in today and say, "I want to sell used cars," and just used cars, they're not allowed. It's not permitted. So not without, obviously, your dealerships, your major dealerships, their primary use has to be the sale of new vehicles. They can do the used vehicles, but there has to be the sale of new vehicles.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brunner, the eight-month extension would be about June?
Yes.
By my calculation, and that, and your intent is to comply with all these conditions by then.
Yep.
Yes.
May I speak too, as well?
Yeah, if you want. Just give us your name and address, yeah.
It's Eric Walder. I'm with the law firm at Dworkin and Bernstein.
Yeah, you got to get into the mic, though, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to yell at you. And I agree with you that working out in saunas is just not a great idea, but anyway. So I'm Eric Walder with the law firm at Dworkin and Bernstein, 60 South Park Place, Painesville, Ohio, 44077. I, Mr. Brunner hired me to show how serious he is about doing this. He has various medical issues. He's been around for 47 years. I went to the site right before we came to this meeting. There, you know, if you put the diagram back up, none of the cars are ever going to go back by the high, or the railroad tracks. None of them are going to be sitting. They're all going to be in the, I'm terrible with directions.
South side.
On the south side. The state does allow up to 10. And so he's not doing the RV rentals, he's not doing the U-Haul rentals. He is cleaning up everything. There's a lot of progress being done. The eight months is, I always tell my clients, if you're going to give a date, give something that you can actually comply with, otherwise it doesn't mean anything. So the couple of questions we had, you know, the 10, the state has come in, they've audited, they said you can have 10. He has enough, it's 3,500 square feet. It is chained off, so they're not allowed to sit in the front. They actually have to be on the side where he already has that space. With the buffering under 116207, we're willing to work with you on that. He's not asking for additional parking at this point. The site is kind of a unique site. It's been there forever. There's not much that can go in there, so he is cleaning up. The cars will be taken out of the back that are not his property. Other ones will be put in the fenced area. So we would like the ability to do 10. He wants to continue doing the auto, truck, and RV repair, which is the main part. It's a very large space, and it is fenced off, and Kathy and I have worked together on other zoning issues before. We're willing to work with, with all of you to make this happen because he took the step, Kathy said it looks the best it's ever looked. I can commit to the board and to the city that when I'm involved, we'll make sure that there's no more creep. We will actually take care of this. So that's, as to the conditions, it is true, we're okay with those, except we'd like the ability to do 10, and basically, eight months till June to be able to get this done, and I'll monitor. Kathy wants progress reports, we can give those to her with pictures to keep you updated, to show you what's going on, and then just, we'll work with the city as to the buffering under 116207. I'm glad to hear it's not anything lavish, because I know it's, prior boards, they've always wanted rosebushes planted somewhere. If that would help, we'll plant a rosebush as well, but, so that's all I have to say at this point. But I will monitor this and help carry this through to fruition.
Thank you. Is there anything? Mr. Crocker?
Mr. Chairman, I guess a question of clarification for the administration. The applicant keeps talking about the state will allow 10 cars, and then the city will, doesn't really want any cars. So where is that discrepancy coming in? Where, what are they, where are they getting the information about the state allowing so many square feet, so many cars to be sold, used cars to be sold on a property?
I actually have a paper with that, Kathy.
Oh, I can't speak to the state requirements. I can only, and maybe Nick can elaborate on the nonconformity status of it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Home rule is really the big issue at this point. Now, the state may allow that 10. However, in this case, as Kathy had outlined, the fact is, is as nonconforming as it is right now, there should be no auto sales at all, just based upon the scheme that we have for zoning. In this particular space, there's no auto sales allowed. Whether there's used cars, new cars, it doesn't matter. It's just not permitted. There's no CUP available for it. There is for auto repair, which Mr. Brunner has, CUP 4. 1139.03 regarding nonconforming uses, vehicle sales being one of those. This commission doesn't have the authority to increase nonconforming use anyway, so it's not even an issue on which you could even vote upon at this point, because you legislatively are not given the right to, the ability to be able to vote.
Okay.
On that particular issue.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you. Is there anything else? So do we want to clean up these other CUPs that you're no longer using? The U-Haul trucks and trailers and the, and the vehicle leasing, the Cruise America? Do we even?
That's the idea, is that this would be a new CUP.
And just, we're just cleaning it all up?
And it would be for, as I kind of bolded in the staff report, vehicle repair facility and sale of used vehicles with the conditions noted. There is no mention of sale or leasing of RVs, U-Hauls, or anything of that nature, so it's only what's listed in the conditions, and it would be strictly vehicle repair, vehicle repair facility, and if, you know, again, with the maintenance of that nonconformity, that's just because it's been grandfathered for so long.
Right. You get the five cars because it's grandfathered in, but this board doesn't have the ability to increase it to 10 anyway.
Correct.
Well, there you go.
I would ask, I guess, if we're going to, I guess, agree to, you know, say, allow for eight months for him to do a complete cleanup, as noted in the conditions, I think Mr. Walter gave a good idea, and maybe that would be an added condition. He could give some progress reports every two months to the, to the effect of what's happening on-site, what's been, what progress has been made, I guess, just so it holds them to it, and then we, we have a finite date, and that, so that we would want to actually note in the conditions a date from wherever your approval is, and eight months from that time.
Mr. Chairman?
Dave?
Would it be appropriate to establish some interim milestones on which ones of these conditions that can be achieved in a shorter time period as well? So we focus, prioritize on what's what here.
Certainly up to you.
I mean, obviously, it's not a good time to plant. We're going into winter, you know?
There's a small window right now to plant.
Yeah.
You have October, and that's about it.
Right. But then the establishment, you have, plants have to be established before November, so.
You got to get into the mic here. You got to get into the mic.
If something's planted now, all the road salt is going to kill them anyways by spring. It happens every year. I've put more plants in there because of the salt kills them, so this is for nothing if I put them in now.
Now, there are some salt-resistant ones. Now, there are some salt-resistant ones. If I remember from the library.
It's called paint.
What?
It's called vinyl, vinyl fencing.
No, no, we came, there was something that the library proposed. It was a salt-resistant plant.
Yeah, it's Tru- and Wally makes it. Green paint.
Paint the plants.
I don't know what it was.
Artificial, yeah.
All right, so, is there anything else? So how do we want to handle this? Dave, do you want to try to break this out?
Yeah, I, sure. Mr. Chairman, I recommend an additional 10th condition that the applicant work with the city to, the administration, to establish a interim milestone schedule and a process for regular progress reporting. And again, and then amend, I guess it would be condition six to extend that to, I want to say June 30th as opposed to June 1st, 2025. Is that the right, is condition six the right one that we were talking about, the deadline?
Well, maybe you take that, you take that installation deadline off of number six, and you put a deadline in number 10.
Yep.
So that it covers everything?
Okay.
June 30th, 2025. And green it up a little bit in the front early in the spring. And you'll work with the city on that and come up with a.
I would like the commission to actually specify the milestone timeframe, if it's every two months.
Every two months.
Oh, we're talking six months. I think every two months would be reasonable. Every three only gets you one interim milestone, really.
Okay. So you want to, Kathy, you want to repeat that condition for? I see you writing over there.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask our assistant law director.
There we go.
Condition 10, applicant will work with the city on an interim progress report basis every two months. This progress report to conclude on June 30th, 2025.
It's not just the progress reporting. I think it's the all-condition compliance by June 30th, 2025.
For complete compliance on June 30th, 2025.
You got it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You know, it's the 10th condition. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the 10 conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosetti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Under new business, we have a miscellaneous review of an accessory structure in excess of 576 square feet for an institutional use at 5420 West Heasley Road. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Yes. My name is Jason Tatterson. That's J-A-S-O-N, T as in Thomas, A-T-T-E-R-S-O-N. I'm the pastor at the Church of Freedom Assembly at 5420 West Heasley Road. Currently, we have two accessory buildings that we use for storage of lawn equipment and things of that nature. Both of those have come to the end of their lifespan. We're looking to build one larger accessory structure. We're going to, we tend to use that building not only for the storage of those kinds of items, but for outdoor activity things, and also in the proposed mezzanine in the second floor, it would also be for file storage and things of that nature. We've experienced a tremendous amount of the growth over the past few years. We've had to take places where we stored inside the building and turn those into classrooms and other ways to facilitate ministry in there. So these two gentlemen here are the ones that know all the details and can answer the questions for the particulars.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Goldman, Registered Architect, President of Focus Planning, Inc. I reside, and my business is located at 5511 Grace Drive, Mennor, Ohio. Proud Mennor resident. I am here as the architect on behalf of Freedom Assembly of God Church. This particular structure is 26 by 40. It's attached to the existing pavilion. The existing pavilion with the five-on-12 roof pitch is timber-framed. It stands at 14 foot, 10 inches above grade. In order for us to accommodate the record retention and storage and be able to free up classroom space that's now being used for storage in the church, we're proposing to do a 16-by-26-foot mezzanine, which will actually require a height of 23 foot, 0 inch from the top of the ridge. I've got colored renderings that I can show you as well. Stanton, you want to agree with that? You know, we've done a very attractive garage structure. We're going to match the roof shingles. I've got all the samples here for the materials. We're using a rigid premium vinyl inherited cream, the burnt sienna architectural roof to match.
You got to get into the mic, see? I told you.
You're bored.
Okay. So we're going to be using burnt sienna architectural GAF Timberline or CertainTeed roof to match what's on the existing pavilion. We are blessed on this site. We have a really tall tree line in the back. That tree line is almost 50 feet tall, and it is between the Klosnik property and wraps around, so that the back of this property is incredibly well-screened, as is the side by a fence and additional planting to the south. To the north, as for the residents along Highland Way in Lake Shore Highlands, the tree line wraps around, and then there's some plantings as well. By situating the, by attaching the storage building to the pavilion, it allows us to make the building also will be completely invisible from the street. This way, and the mezzanine allows us to make a better use of the site. So we do have a variance hearing scheduled for October 8th, and we're asking for this review and for the approval of the planning commission heading into that with the conditions that the administration has placed on the project.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I know we've clarified in item number one that you're, the planning commission doesn't have the ability to prove the height, so we would have to go to the Board of Zoning and Appeals because it exceeds the maximum height allowance for an accessory building. But with the recommendation from you on the actual project, it would go a long way, certainly with the BCA, so.